To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I'd like to begin my formal comments this evening by congratulating the Lake Forest Police Department for their work in identifying and arresting three suspects involved in theft in our central business district. This is yet another example of the tireless and highly efficient work provided by our local police officers, so our thanks to you for that. Tonight, we'll be discussing potential purchase of a building for the purpose of a police public safety facility. The process to date has included six months of due diligence, including alternative site and building options assessments, needs assessments, as well as alternative design options and financial modeling. The process has at its core concern for the expense and impact on taxpayers, consistent with the council fiduciary responsibility to our citizens. The process began with identification of a unique opportunity to acquire a $35 million structure for approximately $3.5 million. The building purchased to be considered tonight includes substantial intrinsic assets, such as underground parking, that would be difficult to reproduce in alternative existing structures or new construction, if a site for such were indeed available. Acquisition of this building, if the council chooses to do so, represents a second step in a multi-step process. This process includes need-specific design, financial modeling, and consideration of options for utilization of excess space. These considerations will take place in transparent fashion, consistent with existing council policies and procedures. I encourage all interested residents to follow the process as it proceeds on the city's website, where a project-specific link will allow access to progress reports and answers to frequently asked questions. At this time, I would like to turn it over to the city manager, who will begin this evening's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item in question is actually under Old Business on the agenda, but certainly, if it pleases the council, we could advance that.
Comments by city manager is the next item on the agenda.
In that case, I have no report for this evening.
No report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. This time, I'd like to offer an opportunity for citizens to address the council. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. The first committee is Public Works Committee. The first item is overview of the Woodbine Bridge Project, which is in the omnibus. This item will be presented by Byron Kutz, Superintendent of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Make sure we can get this set up. There we go. Tonight, I will be giving a high-level presentation on the Lake Woodbine Bridge, as it relates to the two omnibus items on the agenda tonight. Looking at the map on the left, the bridge is located just north of the Lake and Woodbine intersection. It was built in 1912. It is deteriorating and is in need of replacement. If you drive it, it is a beautiful bridge, but structurally, it is time for it to be replaced. It's been load-posted, meaning that there are some limits on it, so it is just time to replace it. Knowing that, the city submitted for an Illinois Bridge grant in October of 2021, and then in 2022, the city was awarded just under $2 million for construction, which was really great news. With that, with getting the federal funding, comes extra IDOT paperwork, and that's really what we're discussing tonight. The use of the federal funds requires the project to be bid by IDOT on their state bidding, what they refer to as a letting. Normally, for our own local projects, we just do it locally through our website, but for these type of projects that have federal funds, you actually have to have the state bid it out. In order to have the state bid it out, IDOT requires that the funding agreements are executed prior to bidding. Basically, what IDOT is looking for is they're looking for assurance from all the municipalities that if they bid out whatever the project is for the municipality, that the municipality is actually committed to pursuing the project and that they have the funding wherewithal to do that. In terms of funding, the local match is estimated about $855,000. That could change, plus or minus, depending on how the bids come in. We're looking to bid it out in August, so we should know the first or second week of August, which is really great timing, because with the budget in October, we could adjust any numbers if needed. In terms of schedule, the project does require full road closure, which would begin tentatively in January of 2025, whenever demolition begins, and then the project would probably have erection starting sometime in the late spring, with completion in late, middle to late September, when we reopen the road. In terms of public outreach, the last couple of years, we really got a lot of good momentum with the residents. We had three or four meetings, and I think the design that you see on the left really speaks to that. If you look at the railings and kind of the arch, it really pays tribute to the existing bridge, which the residents felt were really important. Also, there's a sense of openness underneath, which was important to kind of preserve the ravine in general and for people that may be walking underneath it. The communication will not stop now, though, with design. Once we get a little bit closer to construction, we will work with the communications director and we'll have a plan in place. There most likely will be another open house of sort at some point. And then for tonight, we have two items, like I mentioned earlier, the first being the IDOT funding agreement, which is what I just discussed, and then the other being the Phase III construction engineering services, to have a consultant run the inspection during the project. With that, I can take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kutz? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request for approval to waive the bid process and award installation of water main at the Deer Path and Green Bay Roads intersection to DeMeo Brothers Incorporated and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $234,800 to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $23,480. This item will be presented by Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. This evening, staff is requesting city council's approval to replace a portion of a water main on Deer Path Road. We're going to replace the entire portion at some point in the future, but this portion is one that's actually going through the intersection at Green Bay. We spoke about this a couple of weeks ago at your workshop session, but just to give a simple overview, we've got the Deer Path Streetscape Project coming this spring in April, which will include improvements to the streetscape from Western through Oakwood. Current budget for that is 3.75 mil, of which 2 mil is coming from IDOT on a grant, 1.75 is coming from the city's capital fund. Currently, we're doing final design. We're going to submit that to IDOT by September 30th. They're going to have a bid opening January 17th of next year, so we'll know the real number. In doing that, we have a water main. Portions of it are from 1927, some are from 1941, some are from 1976. Last thing we want to do is build the streetscape and have the water main pop five years down the road. So we propose to budget that with our own capital fund, water fund, to replace that from Western to Green Bay Road. So when we put this together, the budget was for, starting last October, was for the east side of Western up to Green Bay Road. We were not going through the intersection. So with that, the design firm, who was actually designing the streetscape, started to work on the design of the water main about a month ago. And when they were working on that, they went ahead and ran what's called a hydraulic model to look at all the pressures and the volumes, and they determined that we needed to get through Green Bay Road. We needed to hook up to a 12-inch on the west side of Green Bay Road. We couldn't stick with the current eight. So the current main is eight. We're going to upsize it to a 12. If we were going to stop short of Green Bay, we'd be hooking it back into an eight, an old eight. So they came back to us about a month ago and said, "You really need to get through Green Bay and hook up to the 12-inch on the other side of Green Bay." So that's what this project is. They estimated that to be about $200,000. The water main work has got to be done before the streetscape work starts. We can't have two contractors playing in the same sandbox at the same time. It just, flat out, will not work. We're going to complete the Western Ave intersection work at spring break. They can get that done within that week. We had some serious doubts that the contractor, when we award that, could get both intersections done. So recognizing that, we're looking to do and move ahead the Green Bay intersection for here in a couple of weeks to try and get that knocked out. Communications plan, we'll work with Dana Olson or Communications Department to let all the residents know. We understand school is going to be starting, so we're looking to start this the week after Lake Forest Day and get it done in one week. Contractor could be going 10 or 12 hours a day, but we're going to get it done. Detour for that week, we're going to keep one lane of Deer Path Road open with flaggers. So police and fire, if they're heading east, they'll be able to get east. We'll stop the traffic heading westbound, but it will be with flaggers alternating east and westbound. When work is completed for the day, they'll pull the steel plates over the areas they've excavated, so Deer Path will reopen at night, whenever they finish, 7, 8 o'clock. But Green Bay is going to be closed completely. And if you take a look at the chart here, the red area is where local residents that live adjacent to the red will be able to access their driveways. We're not going to cut any of that off. The blue area, just north of the intersection down to Ridge Lane, and then just a little bit south, is where we're going to have the contractors stage their equipment, their materials, stone pipe, end loaders, backhoes, et cetera. Residents and anybody that are traveling on Green Bay Road, they'll simply take Westminster to Oakwood to Illinois to get back onto Green Bay Road, so that will be the detour. Again, the engineer's estimate is 200,000. We went ahead because we didn't have final design. We didn't have final specifications. We went and contacted the three recent contractors that have done big projects for us, that have done a very good job. ALAMP last year worked on Sir Williams Water Main. They did a very good job, but they told us they were busy. They didn't have the time to get this done. DeMeo did Burr Oak for us up on Northwestern Ave. They did a wonderful job. And then Joel Kennedy did the Deer Path Water Main a couple of years ago from golf to golf course entrance. It is a non-budgeted expense. We do not have the dollars in this year's budget for it, so if necessary, we will come back to you in the spring and request approval of a supplemental appropriation ordinance. So that is the plan, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Director Thomas?
Okay. One question. Will you create signage out on Waukegan Road and on Lencina and at the golf course and other access points to Deer Path?
We will. Yeah, signage, but I think also the boards, the trailer boards with messages on them as well, similar to what we did when we did the Deer Path Water Main back, whenever that was, 2022. So yes, exactly. Alerting motorists, if they can take an alternate route for that week, it would be fine.
Alderman Levert?
Could you tell us a little bit about the communication to those who live on Green Bay Road and those who travel Green Bay Road, because maybe they live outside of the red areas, but right next to those areas? How aware are they of this project and?
Right now, you're the ones that know. We are, we're just starting this, just simply because, again, the design came to us and said, "You guys have got to get through that intersection," and we calculated, saying there's two times a year we can do intersection work in town, spring break and the week after Lake Forest Day. But working with Dana Olson and the Communications Department, we plan on blanketing via letters, signage, everything to let residents know, let the schools know. Again, people will be able to travel east and westbound on Green Bay. There will be delays, but they'll be able to travel east and westbound. Again, when the contractor is done in the evening, Deer Path opens up and it'll be normal, just with steel plates over the top. Green Bay will be the one that'll be a challenge, but it's simply, as I said, Illinois, Oakwood, Westminster, and we'll signage that down at Wesley. We can talk to Lake Bluff as well and see if we can put something up close to 176, so.
Alderman Gasharian?
Thanks, Mike. I have two questions, maybe one is for Elizabeth. Source of the revenue from the water fund, is that correct? Okay. For clarification, then, secondly, could Chief Seibert possibly comment on the impact? I know I'm not so much concerned with law enforcement, because we have patrolmen in all parts of the city at all times, but we typically don't have ambulances rolling around, so what impact might that have?
We'll make our way around it. You know, they've got, when they're going to keep one lane open for us, and we'll make alternate routes. We've done this with, you know, before the Deer Path Project with, under the underpass, we split the city in half. We changed our responses around, so we're ready to pivot from whatever needed.
Good. Thank you.
Are there other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to offer an opportunity for public comment on the public works items presented. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Okay. Seeing none. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve waiving the bid process and award installation of water main at the Deer Path and Green Bay Roads intersection to DeMeo Brothers Incorporated and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $234,800 to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $23,480 for a total cost of May I have a motion? Second? Okay. This will be a roll call vote.
Certainly. Alderman Gasharian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Klemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay. Very good. The next item on the agenda is, again, from the Finance Committee, and at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Finance Chair Eileen Weber.
Thank you. Alderman Tac, I have the pleasure tonight, the city has--
I was demoted.
Mayor Tac.
Mayor Tac, excuse me. The city's received notification that it's once again been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 23 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. An April 2024 GFOA, that stands for the Government Finance Officers Association, news release stated that the report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The city has received this prestigious award for the 45th consecutive year. It's something to be very proud of. In addition to recognizing the city for this achievement, the GFOA has issued an award of financial reporting achievement to our Assistant Financial Director, Diane Hall, as the individual designated by the city as instrumental in achieving the award. And I am pleased to prevent this award to Diane, as she serves as the liaison to the city's independent audit firm, Baker Tilly. She coordinates the annual audit process and preparation of the city's annual financial report. Diane, please come up and receive your well-deserved recognition.
And if I could just jump in for a minute, one thing I'd like to add to Chairman Weber's points was that, for the first time ever, as part of our award, GFOA provided special recognition for two specific program criteria, which was long-range operating financial plans and strategic goals and strategies. And I only bring that to the council and the community's attention, because I'm continually impressed with the job our finance staff does, both in utilizing long-term planning philosophies to guide all of our decision-making, but also in our budget document, aligning resources and budgetary decisions with goals that have been identified in our strategic plan. I think it's a real strength of our financial planning and budget processes, and so I want to acknowledge and recognize them for that special recognition this year. Nice job.
Just one last note. In Illinois, 329 organizations received the award, which is only 4.7% of the total 6,963 units of government in the state. So again, another round of applause for Dana. That's all I have, Mayor Tac.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is a public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance, and so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance.
Second.
And this will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Klemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay. The public hearing is open, and at this time, I would like to offer consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2025 and approval of rollovers. This will be the final reading. This will be presented by Finance Director Elizabeth Hollob.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tac. You granted first reading to the appropriations ordinance at your meeting, June 17th, but we're coming back now for final approval in the formal public hearing associated with final adoption of the appropriations ordinance. So the appropriations ordinance is the legal mechanism for authorizing expenditure of public funds. You approved a fiscal year 25 budget in April, which is really the administrative document that sets forth the spending from an operating department standpoint, but now you're taking the legal action of authorizing the expenditure of those funds. And it differs, the appropriation ordinance does differ from the budget, and the easiest way to explain that is the appropriation ordinance worksheet, which I have up on the slide, but which is also included in your packet. And so what we do is we have all the funds listed on the left column. That fund accounting is required under generally accepted accounting principles to show proper expenditure of restricted funds. And so we have the approved budget from April in the first column. From that, we deduct debt payments, because the individual debt service bond issues, those expenditures are authorized in the bond ordinance that you approve when you issue the debt. And so we can back those annual debt service payments out for the appropriation ordinance. We add to those numbers by fund rollovers. Rollovers are items that were appropriated in the previous fiscal year, or fiscal year 24, that either weren't started or weren't completed, and so we need to roll that appropriation forward to fiscal year 25 to allow the expenditure of those dollars. And so you have a detailed rollover list included in your packet. We did not have that available for the June 1st reading, but you have a detailed schedule by individual vendor and project of the amount of rollovers being requested by the operating departments. The next column is the library. The library is not included in the city's approved budget, but as a quasi-external entity that's in a component unit of the city's financial report, it is included in the appropriation ordinance, so we add their approved budget. And then we get to a subtotal. In addition to that subtotal, we add a 10% contingency. This is something the city's done historically to provide for that opportunity where expenditures come up throughout the year that were not budgeted. You just heard one regarding the Green Bay Deer Path Water Main in the intersection. That's an unbudgeted expenditure. The contingency in the appropriation ordinance allows the expenditure of those unbudgeted dollars. The contingency amount is not included in the budgets that are for the department's administrative purposes. That contingency is only available to the city council for approval of unbudgeted items. So we had a great example. Thank you, Mike Thomas. That made it real illustrative. So we add that 10% contingency to get to the total appropriation ordinance amount. Also, at the bottom, you see a line for School District 67. Due to the charter, with School District 67, they don't recognize the appropriation ordinance concept, but for the municipality, we need to include their budget in the appropriation ordinance. We don't have authority over their spending, but it is included as an administrative item. And that gets us to the final appropriation ordinance amount, and that ordinance is included in your packet for approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions for Director Hollob? Okay. Hearing none. I'm assuming that what I'm asking for now, it's not clear from my notes here, that we are asking for a vote to approve the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2025. Is that correct?
We could add, you can have public comment if you'd like, prior to that, taking that vote.
Okay. I'm sorry. At this time, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on the item? No. Hearing none. We will move on to an approval, and again, I'm going to ask this, because the council actions section is unclear to me. We're asking for approval, or a motion to approve, the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2025 and approval of rollovers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Klemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay. At this time, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Klemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is approval, request for approval of an additional fiscal year 24 transfer out of the general fund as directed by the city council in the amount of $1.1 million to fund one-time expenditures to be determined at a later date. This item will be presented by Elizabeth Hollob, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor Tac. The city's finance department has been very busy with all the processes to close out the fiscal year and prepare for our annual independent audit. That audit fieldwork started last Monday, July 8th, and will go for about three weeks. So this is our last opportunity to make any changes to fiscal year 24 before we must officially close the books. So historically, we have come to the city council with any recommendation based on final general fund figures in regards to actual expenditures and revenues compared to budget. This slide here is a slide that we reviewed as part of the budget approval in April, in which we had provided some estimated projections on revenue and expense variances, most of them being on the revenue side, where revenues were coming in significantly higher than budget. Expenses at the time were tracking pretty close to budget, but at that time, the council approved an additional transfer of 3.78 million to the capital fund, and that's included in our year-end figures already. Since that time, based on the actual expenses and revenues that we have in the fiscal year close, we're recommending an additional $1.1 million transfer out of the general fund into the capital fund. It's made up of two pieces. First is the fiscal year 24 budget in the general fund included a potential transfer of $500,000 to the self-insurance fund. The self-insurance fund administers the medical and dental plan for employees and retirees. Due to very positive claims experience over the course of fiscal year 24, that transfer was not necessary. Therefore, we're recommending that transfer go to the capital fund instead of the self-insurance fund. The second piece relates to expenses. So the small variance we had projected in April was largely based on expenditure projections from the operating departments. We realized at the time, that was a conservative assumption, and we anticipated we would likely see additional expenditure savings. We do have additional expenditure savings of $600,000, which are less than the estimates for fiscal year 24, and so we're recommending that be added to the transfer for a total of 1.1 million. I just included a note there that final year-end expenses, we were tracking on a 0.61 variance in April. Final year-end numbers, expenses were 97.46% of budget, and that's inclusive of the rollovers you just approved from '24 to '25 impacting the general fund. So we saw an expense variance savings of about 2.5%, so I think that's-- So I think that's really good, with a lot of that being personnel vacancy savings that takes place throughout the year with turnover. So we're recommending the additional one point one million dollar transfer, and I will be happy to answer questions.
Other questions for Director Hollob?
So is that to be directed to the capital improvement fund?
Yes.
So just point of clarification on our agenda. It just says one time, one point one million fund expenditures to be determined at a later date, but it's supposed to go to the capital improvement fund, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So it is coming out of the general fund and being directed to the capital fund, and will be available for future expenditures.
Just as the council action on our, on our agenda, it's not written.
I see that, yes, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve an additional fiscal year twenty-four transfer out of the general fund as directed by the city council in the amount of one point one million dollars to fund one-time expenditures to be determined at a later date.
So moved.
To the, to the capital improvement fund.
To the capital improvement fund.
So moved.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clements.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. I'll read each of the items. If there's any item that an alderman would like removed or taken separately, please notify me at the completion of the reading. There are twelve items tonight. First is approval of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting minutes. Second, approval of the July first, twenty twenty-four city council workshop meeting minutes. Third, approval of the check register for the period of May twenty-fifth through June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Fourth, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lake Forest and the Lake Forest Library. Number five, approve the purchase of Starcom Radio's equipment and programming in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for the fire department from state bid vendor Motorola Solutions. Six, approval to award a contract to Xenon Environmental Corporation to purchase replacement membrane modules included in the fiscal year twenty-five budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and thirty thousand dollars for spare membrane train parts for a total of one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Item seven, approval of expenditures related to the Deer Path Bridge abutments and Route forty-one ramps landscaping project in the amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Item eight, approval of a purchase to replace a skid steer loader to Burris Equipment in the amount of ninety-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Item nine, approval of Phase One Design Engineering Services for Wesley Road Resurfacing Project, Destrand Associates Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of eighty-seven thousand thirty dollars to include a five percent contingency in the amount of four thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars for a total cost of ninety-one thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Item ten, approval of Phase Three Construction Engineering Services for the Lake Woodbine Bridge Project to Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars to include a five percent contingency in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total cost of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Item eleven, approval of a resolution for a joint funding agreement for federally funded construction with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for construction of the Lake Woodbine Bridge Project, Section Number twelve dash zero 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 nine four dash zero zero dash B R, for a local match estimated at eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute required agreements and additional paperwork as required by I dot related to work on this project. And finally, item twelve, award of the low bid for the twenty twenty-four inflow and infiltration repairs to Visu Sewer LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars, as well as approving a contingency in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a total cost of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. At this time, is there any item that the council would like removed or taken separately? Okay, hearing none. Do we need public comment on the omnibus items? No, okay. This time, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the twelve omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Clements.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the previously threatened old business. This is the item to which I was referring in my mayoral comments. There was a little misunderstanding as to when I was going to make those. Anyway, I won't read them again. At this time, I would like the council to continue consideration of acquisition of the building and property at nineteen twenty-five Field Court as provided for in the previously approved purchase and sale agreement for adaptive reuse as a new City of Lake Forest Police Facility. This will be presented by Jason Wishe, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, good evening. I know we have a lot of information to cover this evening, so I'm going to try to talk quickly, but want to take an opportunity first just to orient both the council and the public as to why we're here. So thinking about how we'll structure tonight's presentation. We're going to begin with just a high-level timeline, helping everybody understand how we got here, what's been done to date, and of course, what a future timeline might look like depending on city council action tonight. Following that, I'm going to turn it over to our interim Chief of Police, Mike Lang, who's going to talk a little bit about the project need and why a new public safety facility will help ensure the police department's ability to meet the operational demands of, of modern policing while meeting the expect, high expectations that, that our residents have in the community. Then following Mike's presentation, we're going to turn it over to some of the experts who the council engaged back in April as part of our extensive due diligence process to hear summaries of the reports that they prepared as a result of, of the work they were brought on for. Specifically, the presentations will focus on the facility assessment, condition assessment that was conducted by the Concord Group, as well as the preliminary space needs analysis that was done by FGM Architects. And then finally, after that, we'll turn it over to city staff to provide sort of a high-level overview of the financial picture to contextualize the, the financial picture for this project. I would remind the council and the public that all of these numbers are, are just estimates at this point. The numbers will be refined over a period of time. I'll talk about it on the next slide. We really believe we've erred on the conservative side and hope that these numbers can be refined over the coming year. But I believe it's really important, before the council makes an informed decision, to have a good understanding of not just the one-time capital costs, but ongoing operating and maintenance costs associated with acquisition of the building. And then I'll just conclude the presentation by reminding the council what action is actually before you tonight. So just a, a quick look at the timeline for this project. Again, this has advanced, you know, over the last six to eight months, really because of the unique financial opportunity that has presented itself. We know, based on the cyclical nature of the office market and, and based on past purchases, that the, the building that the city council has identified would not have been financially viable for us five years ago. Certainly, as we think about, again, that cyclical nature of the market, none of us have a crystal ball, but there's a, the high likelihood that this opportunity wouldn't be available three to five years from now either. And so the financial opportunity has driven a little bit of this timeframe. When I talk about the financial opportunity, you'll hear a little more in tonight's presentation about sort of the comparative costs for alternative construction options and how they compare to the potential opportunity that's in front of the council. But prior to the April fifteenth meeting, as these initial conversations started, the city staff at Council Direction did explore other sites within the community, both potential publicly-owned sites and private, private properties that were at least available on the marketplace. Studies were also conducted of other recently constructed police stations in other nearby communities. Some of that information is available on, has been available on the city's website for some time. More will continue to be added. But all of that led to the council meeting on April fifteenth, where the city council considered a purchase-sale agreement for the property at nineteen twenty-five Field Court. That price had been negotiated at three point five million. As part of the terms of the purchase-sale agreement, the city was afforded a ninety-day window to conduct all of the due diligence, which was needed to understand what type of asset we would potentially be acquiring, both the positives behind it, but also any potential concerns, liabilities, red flags. And so at the April fifteenth meeting, the council did approve both the purchase-sale agreement and the contract awards, as I said, for some of the studies you'll hear tonight. As part of your decision tonight, and it's good to orient the public, the purchase-sale agreement does give the council the opportunity to terminate and walk away from the, from the property at no cost, if that's the direction that the council wants to go. But between, as, and we'll hear more in a few minutes, but from the April fifteenth meeting until now, staff and the project consultants have been heavily engaged in all of the due diligence that I referenced, and you'll hear more from tonight. Again, what is before the council this evening is just a decision on whether to move forward with acquiring the property or not. I know that there will be a lot of questions about pro, overall project costs, design. We don't how, how those may be funded. We don't have answers to those questions tonight. Those will be fleshed out over the next year or so. As you can see from the slide here, while this is a, a significant decision that's in front of the council, we're still very early in this process. And from this point moving forward, even if the council chooses to proceed, we're realistically still two years out from this project being completed. If the council chooses to move forward with closing on the property this evening, staff will then begin the process of developing RFPs for the comprehensive schematic design and build-out of the property. That will probably come back to the council in September or so for a contract award, if the council at that time was comfortable with the contract award and awarded, again, the bid to a specific vendor. We would then begin what is probably at least an eight-to-ten-month process to go through the full schematic design. And in terms of what that would look like, I want to make sure I emphasize that from that point, the process will really follow a traditional model that has served Lake Forest very well. We would look at establishing an advisory group that would work with staff, with city consultants to help probe for efficiencies, ask tough questions, help refine the scope of the project, and better understand sort of the financial implications. There will be multiple check-in points with the city council, also with the community, for opportunity for feedback. And so for those that have been on the council a little longer, you may remember we used a similar process with the Deer Path Park Athletic Fields Project. We've certainly done that with the Deer Path Streetscape Project that was brought up earlier tonight. The advisory group model has worked very well in, in assisting with the comprehensive plan updates to various chapters. So that's something that we would look to do over that eight-to-ten-month window. And again, through that process, we'd really look to find efficiencies in the design and cost refinements to, to come back ultimately to council next summer, likely late spring, early summer. And similar to how we approached the Deer Path Park Project, what my expectation would be is coming to council with a very baseline project, a menu of additional add-ons or options that the council can consider, with obviously the need for them, the financial conversation, which will occur over that fall and winter period to better orient the council on how this could be paid for, what that might look like, what the impact might be to an individual homeowner within the community. So again, all of those questions not to be answered this evening, but they will come in due time depending on council action this evening. And so can I answer any questions about the timeline itself before we move into the presentation? If not, then I am going to turn it over to interim chief Lang to talk a little bit more about the project need.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wishe. Mayor Tac, members of the city council, thanks for a few moments of your time tonight so I can talk about some of the challenges that our, you know, current police facility poses to us, as well as some of the opportunities that a new police facility, you know, would present to us in becoming a better police department and also in, you know, serving the community better. Our current police department, as you know, was built in the nineteen sixties and not really built for any sort of significant expansion. The last time we'd done any major renovations to the police department would have been back in the mid nineteen nineties. So it's been quite some time. The, the current building is just simply not adequate for our current needs, as well as the future needs. However, that being said, I do want to commend all staff at our police department for continuously adapting and overcoming, you know, those challenges to providing the highest quality of services we possibly can to the citizens. So while it's not a perfect facility, we, we've done our best to, to serve you all well. In the last ten years, our department has become far more diverse in our personnel, in our training requirements, and the equipment that we need, you know, in order to perform the job to the best of our abilities. So there's been a lot of changes in the law, law enforcement landscape. We simply have maximized every single inch of our police department to the best of our abilities, and we are outgrowing it significantly. We believe a new facility is needed to continue to maintain those high levels of service that I know everybody here appreciates and that we definitely enjoy providing, you know, for the community. And also, you know, to meet the constant changes that are going to continue to happen in law enforcement today. So just a few, a few of the challenges that we're going to see here, that we're going to talk about is, number one is our training space. As you know, training is extraordinarily important in law enforcement, and it's always changing. Some of it pushed by law enforcement themselves, other by state mandates. So we, year over year, we're constantly seeing those demands change. We have one classroom in our police building that can accommodate fifteen people for a class. So it's a very small classroom, it's one, it's very minimal. It works, but very limited. We also are very limited in the overall space for our firearms training and our higher-level use-of-force training, very, very limited in storage space, pretty, pretty significant. We often have to repurpose some of our rooms, like our lunchroom or our defensive tactics training room, to provide additional training opportunities. So we're really just kind of repurposing things and, and doing everything we can to, you know, continue to keep our officers very well-trained. Our evidence processing and storaging areas are definitely a concern. We haven't seen any major renovations to that area in over thirty-plus years. They are very small. We have a bare minimum amount of storage that is very contained in the basement of our police department, as if you remember. So we can't really expand into that. So the, we've had several different iterations of storage systems, if you will, in our evidence room to accommodate our ever-growing need for evidence storage and to make sure everything is properly stored. So we definitely need some assistance there. Our social services department in our, in our, program in our department has really exploded in the last two years. Lauren Perez, our social worker, has done a tremendous amount of work. She's seen a significant increase in volume in her work. And the spaces provided to her are very minimal. She only has one room to accommodate personal one-on-one therapy sessions for our residents, and it's very small, and it's in our police department lobby. So from a confidentiality and a privacy standpoint, this is a real concern to us. We don't have any other options, and we are seeing a lot more people coming in there for her services. So we'd love to be able to expand on that and maintain a more private opportunity for residents to enjoy those services. How we bring offenders into our police department, how they exit our police department is a real concern of ours. We have one small Sallyport where one squad car can barely fit into. If we had to transport an offender to the hospital, let's say there's no ability to, to have an ambulance come in and safely make that transfer, they have to be walked outside of our police department. They have to be walked outside of our police department. So that's always a process, and we do go through that more frequently than you might think. And also, when we're having offenders leave our police station, the only way they can leave is through the front lobby, which is very small. And often then they have interactions with residents, and we'd like to minimize that as much as we possibly can. And even giving those offenders some privacy too with that. Our investigations area is one small room, eight cubicles, very tightly packed in there. Not a lot of privacy. Again, they can always hear each other talking. So we'd love to be able to expand that to offer more privacy for our detectives. And we have one storage closet in there, and that's it. So storage is definitely a theme throughout all of this that we need to have more space in order to provide the right equipment, as well as we're seeing advances in forensic, digital examination of evidence, and we'd love to be able to provide that for our detectives. Our locker rooms are significantly outdated. They're about twenty-five years old. The flooring is probably thirty years old, and we really haven't seen any major renovations down there in quite some time. So we'd love to be able to improve that quality of living, if you will, for all the officers. Our workforce is also changing. Twenty-five percent of our overall workforce is women. We would definitely love to be able to upgrade the women's locker room. It's pretty old and love to be able to provide better services for them. Our parking and garage at our current police department has some pretty significant limitations. Right now, we have around twenty-six vehicles in our fleet. Our garage only can store twelve, and that's maximum if we really squeeze them in there. We're also using our police garage to store vehicles when we're processing them on larger crime scenes, like the arrest the mayor talked about earlier. So that limits our ability to kind of store our vehicles safely, to hopefully increase their length of life. And we have very limited parking too. We don't have any secure parking at the police department. Very, very minimal parking because we're sharing it with the FD. So for the residents in the front or whether it's the staff in the back, we're pretty limited there. And finally, just talk about some of the private office spaces. We have six patrol supervisors, sergeants and commanders. They all have to share two offices. So three people into one small office. There's no other space for them. We'd love to be able to provide more professional offices for more private opportunities for them to be working with their officers, having those counseling sessions, and just providing better services for them. This new facility can present a phenomenal opportunity for retention and recruitment. It's an extraordinarily competitive market right now in law enforcement. And to retain our excellent employees, we think this positions us in a really positive way to keep our officers here, as well as puts us in a great position to attract and recruit the next generation of law enforcement for our police department. So there's no doubt that will have an impact. While we have consistently adapted and overcame these challenges, we definitely believe that we've maximized the abilities of our current facility and would love to have your consideration in allowing us to provide a better police department and ultimately continuing to evolve and even be better, serving at a higher level than we can at this point. So Mayor Tac, thank you. Members of the city council, thank you very much for this time. I appreciate that. And with that, I can turn it back over to Mr. Wishe.
Before you go, are there any particular questions for Deputy Chief Lang? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Justin Johnson from the Concord Group to again provide a summary of the facility analysis that was recently completed.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. Justin Johnson from the Concord Group will be presenting tonight on the assessment that was completed at nineteen twenty-five Field Court. The assessment was a visual in-depth based assessment that encompassed all aspects of the building systems and assets. The intent of the assessment is to evaluate the condition with the hope and goal of identifying recommended repair, replacement, and maintenance. The scope of work was done to an ASTM uniformate standard, encompassed all aspects of the building, including mechanical, electrical plumbing, structure, envelope, and to the interior fit-out. The results identified roughly thirty-five million in total asset value. I should note that the assets not evaluated were systems that were assumed to last the life of the building, such as footings and foundations. So that thirty-five million would be on the low side of what the actual full replacement cost would be for that building. The intent was to identify the deferred maintenance, i.e. being the assets and systems that were needed for immediate repair, replacement. And that was identified year after year out through that graph that is shown in the lower right-hand corner through ten years. And that came out to roughly eleven million over a ten-year span. So with that being said, that will take us to our next slide, which is our project outcomes, which identifies a pretty key night metrics for facility condition assessments, which is the FCI score, or Facility Condition Index. The score for this building came out to point zero nine six. And what that score means, it's a ratio of the identified repair and replacements in comparison to that thirty-five million, which identifies the total replacement cost of all assets and systems integral to that building. As you can see, the score is quite favorable for where the building currently stands. The score on the right of the zero point one nine nine, not to be confused, is a five-year facility condition index, and that is there for reference in case that you were to do nothing in terms of repairing or replacing anything in the building, excuse me, upon acquisition, that you would still be in a standing that would not be deemed critical. So in conclusion, the FCI score basically alludes that the building is in good standing, which ultimately provides further backing of potential decisions. Next slide. Original cost compared to updated cost. So this effort was also in collaboration with FGMA. The results were shared post-delivery of the assessment, and ultimately that was handed over and worked in conjunction. So you're seeing a side-by-side bar graph which identifies a ten-year replacement projection, which I mentioned earlier of eleven million. This is over a ten-year span. You're seeing different spikes in the graph. Our role as a consultant for conducting the facility condition assessment is to predict the repair and replacement based upon the expected year that that would need to be addressed. It isn't our role to necessarily try to flatline that out, but there is the approach that intends to provide options to the client in terms of deferring some of those asset replacements by conducting creative repair and maintenance. The green graph that is shown next to it shows a value, a total value of just over six million over a ten-year period. This value represents the total encompassing adjusted costs after a potential project that was identified here shortly to be presented by FGMA. Any questions on the results?
Any questions?
Maybe I missed it. Was that ten-year replacement cost twenty-two-four dollars?
Yes, it was. Thank you for saying that. And that brings up another great valued point, the cost estimating that went into this. This is a very strong backing of our company. We have sixteen cost estimators that do this on a day-to-day basis. They conduct over four billion dollars with the construction costs estimated annually. This is a common pitfall of this service, and we feel that this is our greatest strength in delivering facility condition assessment is the cost estimates that are provided within this figure here.
Other thoughts, questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And I'll just note before I turn it over to our colleagues from FGM that these, I understand, are based on estimated useful life and replacement. As a reminder to the council, our Public Works Building Maintenance Sections do a pretty fantastic job of pursuing proactive maintenance, and we've conducted very similar facility assessments for all of the physical assets that we own, with the idea behind it and understanding where there's opportunities to perhaps extend useful life, but also in how to better manage some of these replacement cycles so that we can avoid, as you see on the screen here, some of the peaks and valleys that come with these. So if there's opportunities for us to sort of smooth those costs out, we look to do that. And so I know that's something the Public Works staff has already been contemplating. Thank you, Justin. Next, I'm going to invite Ray Li from the FGM Group.
So good evening. I'm here to give you a brief overview on some of our findings today. First, I just wanted to say that, you know, FGM Architects, we actually specialize in police design, worked on over three hundred projects, and we have many what we call adaptive reuse projects. That means taking buildings that weren't designed as a police station and converting them to police stations. We've done it with everything from grocery stores to, you know, believe it or not, office buildings. We have just completed one for Rosemont, Illinois, down the street. So just wanted to get in that with you. Okay. The purpose was to actually take a look at this facility and see how it would do for conversion or adaptive reuse into a police station. So to start with, we actually performed a space needs analysis, and I believe that you've received that report. And many of the items and shortcomings in this existing police station were pointed out by DC Lang. Otherwise, the real goal is to see how this building do. Okay. Okay. The, when we took a look at the space needs scenarios, we started with a need-to-have. These would be the must-have type things that the police department needs to function, projecting forward for thirty-plus years. The nice-to-haves, these are what I'll call like the future-proofing type items. Say, you know, we are looking at what might come up. Like, for example, one of the things that Chief Lang said that was like social services have kind of fell in the auspices of police departments. This is a relatively new thing. We've probably seen it increasing more in the last five years. So space is needed. What comes next? Are there other things like that? So nice-to-haves actually provides additional space for some other functions and as well as builds in a little bit more space for extra future-proofing.
So just to highlight a few of the spaces that are included in the need-to-haves. As DC pointed out, a lot of these are covered in our need-to-have items. Top of the list is the multipurpose training space, which is very limited in the existing station. It's sized to accommodate forty people. That allows the department to host some regional training opportunities. Also pointed out were, excuse me, I'm sorry, my voice has gotten very dry. Soft interview room spaces, which are important for for victims. It's important to have different types of interview spaces within the facility. The soft interview allows a victim to have the opportunity to not feel like they're a suspect. Also included some additional training spaces, as well as locker room spaces. As the chief pointed out, the current spaces are very tight and overgrown. Part of that is due to not only the size of the lockers, but also the expanded growth of females in the industry. And then also very important to a state-of-the-art facility is indoor parking. It's important to kind of preserve all the equipment that's within the existing squad vehicles. Currently, the new program identifies the need to accommodate squad parking. The full fleet, which is twenty-seven vehicles, the existing facility only accommodates twelve. In the nice-to-have examples of spaces, it's a lot of it, as Ray said, is to give us a little bit more future-proofing. The top of the list is an expanded training room facility, which accommodates sixty people. So it gives, again, additional opportunity to host events. Some additional training spaces, defensive tactics training would be a dedicated space in this scenario so that, you know, dual use of space is not as important. And then again, the fleet garage and also an expanded tactical firing range. There is firing range included in the base need-to-have scenario. This just expands upon it further, as well as providing some additional investigation space, not only additional workstations, but the potential for an analyst as well. So expanded space kind of sprinkled throughout the facility to add on later becomes a little bit more difficult because it's hard to get the spaces where you need them. So it's nice to build in a little bit of extra at the onset.
This diagram just kind of shows, I should say, this chart shows like where the different spaces and where some of the shortcomings of the existing police station falls. I'm not going to go through all of this, but if you see, like, let's take one, like the defensive tactics training type areas, fire range wellness areas. You know, the existing conditions has about fifty-five hundred. We're similar on the need-to-have. And then on the nice-to-have, we expanded the range to provide more operations and also have a dedicated defensive tactics training room. That's just an example of what was done between the existing conditions, the need-to-have, and the nice-to-have. So from an overall cost point of view, these costs were actually projected to construction start in Q three of 2025. So a little over a year from now, I would say. I think the big thing to talk about is when you compare like either the need-to-have or the nice-to-have versus a new construction option, there's a tremendous savings here. You know, when you take a look at the bottom-line numbers of totals of let's just say twenty-five million plus compared to like forty-two million dollars plus. So when we look at this overall project, we kind of see, one, is it viable? We as architects that work on public safety say yes, it is viable. Number two, what about value? We say when we look at new construction versus this building, we say this is a very good value. So that's the wisdom that we do impart to you. And if you have, I think, oh, is that someone else's? Ask if there's any questions for us. Likely to be less than a new construction estimate if we convert the new to new? No. There's only been a couple times in history where construction costs actually fell. One was like the Great Recession back in two thousand and eight. One was during the pandemic, which was very short-lived. And then what did we see afterwards? Huge increases in construction inflation. Even today, when we see like our inflation, you know, CPI and things like that normalizing, we're still seeing construction inflation due to shortages of labor and shortages of equipment. So projects are being dragged out longer, which is costing more. So I would say if I was to take a polish up my crystal ball here, okay, I don't do well in the stock market. I would probably say like in four to five years, you know, let's, even if we take a normal consumer CPI rate of like two and a half percent or something like that, that's two and a half percent per annum for five years. I don't see you getting this for less money. And when you take a look at the building, I think like Concord Group showed it too, the building that you're purchasing, you're buying a lot of building at a very good price. And like the manager said, that doesn't come along every day. So you have to consider that.
One other question I have is one of the unique assets of this adaptive reuse is the underground structure. And so just for public knowledge, what, taken by itself in terms of if we were to build a new structure and build an underground structure similar size to that, what would you estimate the cost of such a thing to be?
That's a good question. I'm going to give you an analogy though, okay? If you take a look at structured parking, like a parking deck, okay, that's actually less expensive construction than doing a full basement like this. If we did right now, that's going close to forty thousand dollars a stall. That's a lot of money. How many stalls do we have down there, do you think? Do you remember?
Sixty-five, I believe.
Twenty-seven, but we got extra.
Yeah. Yeah. So if we look at new- Yeah. So, if we look at new construction, you know, we have to dig down, like, on that thing, it's down, I think, over twelve feet. That's a lot of dirt that we have to remove. Then we have to put pumping systems in to keep it dry and all sorts of stuff. I would not be surprised if that would be close to four hundred dollars a square foot for construction in today's market. And then, so we multiply it out down like thirty thousand square feet, you know, that's a lot of money.
Okay. Very good. Are there other questions? Okay, Alderman Webber.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment and said, and share that this, all this information has been so helpful. Everything that we've had in the packet between the two of you and your organization, as well as Concord, and I just wanted to say thank you for doing it so quickly and with the time sensitivity of where we're at tonight. And just thank you. I've really enjoyed learning and taking this all in for decision.
Well, thank you. Even though it was done quickly, I think the police department will attest, we didn't skimp on it. They spent many, many hours in their police station. It just had to rearrange our schedules to do so and accommodate it, but it was actually a lot of fun. You know, it's a lot of fun to work with a good department.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Alderman Levert.
Um, one, one more question before you leave. Thanks. Would it maybe be helpful to those listening in here tonight to know other projects that you've worked on and cost parameters for similar-type towns or projects, please?
I can let you know other projects that we've worked on. I don't know all the numbers off the top of my head. I'm sorry about that. But ones that we're currently completing right now, okay, Displanes Police Station, down there. Like I mentioned, we just completed Rosemont. It's got a few things to finish off, like, guess what? We've been waiting for an elevator for like fifteen months. That's the last, the only thing we don't have. And then, we finished Cary Village Hall City Police Department, just over the border in Caledonia, which is just north of Kenosha. Let's see, Palatine, Franklin Park, Skokie, Highland Park, long time ago, Mundeline. There's, the list goes on and on. We, we do a lot of police stations. So, look at our website. We've got a lot of pictures on there.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you so much. Next, I'm going to invite Assistant Public Works Director Jim Lockafer. Jim oversees our building maintenance section in Public Works, and I've asked him to provide a high-level overview of potential operating budget impacts were the city to acquire a building of this magnitude. Jim?
Thank you, City Manager Wishe. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I do just have this one short slide that I wanted to review this evening, and it's exactly as City Manager Wishe described. Before, I discussed the chart on the right-hand side, which is more of an overview of this potential new PD facility. The chart on the left-hand side is included as an overview of our actual annual operating budget from a public works, building maintenance perspective for the municipal services building. My intent wasn't go, wasn't to go line by line, but to simply say, at an annual amount, we see a budget of right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, on the right-hand side, the estimated PD operating budget, before I dive into that and share what that number is, that you can see, I did want to reiterate City Manager Wishe's comments that he made earlier on in terms of this being an estimate at this point, and also a, a conservative estimate. We feel it's conservative from the standpoint, when we put it together, we assume the full use of the building. Myself, the building maintenance supervisor, and some other public work staff, we didn't want to assume exactly at this point what floors would be used and how they would be used. We took that conservative approach to just say, all right, let's, let's look at the entire thing. And again, as, as City Manager Wishe explained, as, if, if there is a potential design process that would occur, that this would be something that would be continually refined as part of that process as well. And so, as you can see, we, we have the current total at the bottom for that PD operating budget, right around two hundred and fifty thousand. Happy to take any questions.
What's the square footage on the municipal services building?
Right around thirty thousand square feet.
So, is it fair to assume that the cost for ninety-eight thousand square foot building is only going to be an incremental increase like that?
Yes, and, and I know originally when we were diving into this, that was an initial thought that, that we had, oh, could we just look at, you know, multiplying it by that, that factor. But truly, our approach was instead, we actually met with our contractors that hold many of these building maintenance service accounts and brought them on-site. And there's, there's one, there's, there's some economies of scales with some services provided, but then also truly where it starts to differentiate from MS is the actual assets that are out there. And one good example, Alderman Novit, just, just to highlight quickly, HVAC services, right? Fairly comparable. That was one that was a little bit eye-opening for me, and as I dove into it more, I, I understood there's actually four major units at, at this nineteen-twenty-five building that is absolutely going to take a lot of maintenance, the, the perform, the preventative maintenance twice a year, annual basis. There's absolute cost for that. But then when you get into the building to actually change filters and things like that, it's, from what I heard, slightly less difficult than how they have to go through at MS. So, truly, line by line, we do have some confidence with their numbers.
If we have a tenant in the building who takes over thirty percent of the square footage, which is a possibility given the third floor, would they be pitching in on these fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can address that, and that would certainly be our expectation, that any proceeds from a potential lease from a third-party tenant would go towards cost of operating and maintaining the building. But ultimately, that would be a decision for the City Council to make.
Thank you.
And I think to your point, recognizing that not all of the space needs to or will be utilized by the city, some of these conservative estimates anticipate providing these basic maintenance needs for the entire building. But again, in this hypothetical, if the third floor were vacant, we wouldn't be providing daily janitorial services to the space. So, we're confident that in time, we will be able to find the right tenant to fill some of the space. In the interim, I think there would be pretty substantial cost savings from some of these estimates. Okay. Thanks so much, Jim. And I know we're cycling through a lot of people here, so I appreciate everyone's patience. We will get to council discussion very shortly. But finally, I want to turn it back over to our Finance Director, Elizabeth Hollab, to just provide a preliminary, high-level overview of the financial considerations associated with the potential build-out of this project.
Thank you, City Manager Wishe. And as I start, I want to differentiate the short-term financing considerations against the long-term. Before you this evening is a decision to purchase the building for three and a half million dollars. That is an unbudgeted expense, but it can be supported from capital fund reserves. So, there are funds available currently in reserves that would offset and fund the cost of the purchase. But as we embarked on this discussion, we knew that the bigger question was the financing aspect of the improvements that would be required to the building to turn it into the police station. So, we did not do a lot of in-depth analysis because we're well far away from needing to finance that, but we wanted to give the council some bit of perspective on where we might be financed in the financial considerations. The biggest part of this discussion is the city's self-limiting ordinance. So, currently, as a home-rule community, there is no legal limitation on the city for the issuance of debt. However, the city does have a self-limiting ordinance, most recently modified in 2013. And that self-limiting ordinance sets a cap on the total funds levied for the combination of debt service on property tax-supported debt, as well as any capital improvement levy on the tax levy, funding capital improvements in the five-year capital improvement fund. This chart here shows where we stand currently as of April thirtieth, 2024, in regards to the cap. The cap is that moving line on the top. That is an inflation-adjusted cap based on the municipal price index. And the municipal price index measures the cost of public work contracts specific to Illinois. And so, rather than just using the standard CPI, we use one that's construction-related. And so, we adjust that cap each year based on the published MPI. The yellow line going forward are, is the forecast. And because we don't know how that will be adjusted into the future, we use a standard three percent MPI assumption going forward every year. And so, that sets our limit. And then if you look at what is consuming that limit by property tax levy year, the red is issued debt, except for Deer Path Park. So, those bonds that existed before 2023 that are supported by property tax levy dollars, and that's the annual debt service associated with those bond issues. The green line is the ten-year debt service on the Deer Path Park bonds that were issued in 2023. As you know, that was a sixteen-million-dollar project. We used four million dollars in reserves, but we bonded twelve million of that project. We financed that over a ten-year period, and so we know what that annual debt service is going to be retired, required for those bonds. The blue hash mark represents the capital improvement levy, both previous and forecasted, that are going directly into the capital improvements fund and helping to support the five-year CIP on a pay-as-you-go basis. We recognize that many of those costs are recurring in nature. They aren't one-time expenses, and so it's appropriate to fund those at some level on a pay-as-you-go basis and not require debt to support those expenses, to support those expenses. So, the reason why I've hashed that is that's something the City Council deliberates on each year and establishes what that capital improvement levy is going to be, whereas the solid are, are ingrained in the bond ordinance and required. So, as you can see, we currently are bumping up against the limit, which would require an amendment to the self-limiting ordinance to accommodate any debt associated with the police facility. So, as we discussed at the July first workshop, we anticipate the discussion on that or, on those ordinance revisions to come as part of the 2024 property tax levy process. So, you will start those discussions in October, and then anticipating by the time you approve the 2024 property tax levy in December, we'll have also had the discussions regarding the self-limiting ordinance. So, any questions related to that cap or that ordinance requirement?
I just have one. So, you just said that we would consider the levy, the capital, the, the improvement levy for this project. When will we, when will we start paying for this?
Right. So, in theory, construction starting third quarter of 2025, as you heard from FGMA, you wouldn't be bonding for this project for another year.
So, it would be the fall of twenty-five?
Fall of twenty-five.
Aftering the tax bills that come out in May of twenty-six?
Correct. However, what we're going to recommend on the next slide is similar to Deer Path Park, that we phase that in.
Right.
And so, if the councils decided to proceed, we would recommend a first-year phase-in this year, so that you begin to absorb that increased levy. That's what we did with Deer Path Park. So, the year anticipating, we increased about a third of what we projected so that we phased that in over three years.
Okay. So, but that's going to be then, spring of twenty-five, when that 2024 tax bill comes out?
Correct.
It'll be in a year. It'll be May first?
Yes.
That the first hit on this happens.
First portion of that, yes, yes.
And then, I'm sorry, explain again to me the, the hashtags. I understand that they're capital improvement projects that we've identified?
Um, so that's just the forecasted capital improvement levy each year and the five-year forecast for the capital fund. It is subject to change and approved each year as part of the property tax levy process, but that's what we've built in to our long-term forecasting for our five-year CIP.
So, it's a portion of the property tax money?
Correct.
That's allocated to that particular fund? But it's money that comes in as part of the, sorry, I don't mean to be-
No, that's absolutely correct. It's part of the property tax levy.
Okay.
But instead of paying bondholders associated with debt issues, it's going right into the capital fund to fund city.
Right. As opposed to a debt payoff.
Right. So, we're avoiding the interest costs associated. Yep, absolutely right. So, as you can see, we didn't have a, a capital improvement levy.
Right.
You know, in previous years, we relied primarily on debt and other revenue sources. But this has proven to be very helpful in the increased costs we've seen needing to be funded in the five-year CIP. Okay, so the next page, this is looking at the long-term financing potential implications. So, without really having an estimated project cost, we did make some preliminary assumptions regarding potential bond funding. First, that we will qualify for tax-exempt financing. We've talked with bond counsel about that, and understand the implications and how we work around that, and feel very comfortable that we'll be able to qualify for tax-exempt status and have a lower interest rate. We had looked at maturity ranges of both ten and fifteen years, understanding that the city is typically very aggressive about debt payoff, trying to get that debt paid off as, as quickly as possible, but understanding that a project of this magnitude might require looking at a longer maturity range. So, we looked at both the ten and fifteen-year option. We looked at financing at three levels, fifteen million, twenty million, and twenty-five million as a potential bond issue amount. And we, we forecasted these based on current interest rate conditions. So, currently, a ten-to-fifteen-year, a ten-year issue, AAA, tax-exempt, would carry about a three-point-six-six percent interest rate. A fifteen-year would have a slight premium of three-point-eight-five percent. We know that there is a forecast for reduced interest rates. So, there is a hope that when we finance this in a year, we'll see lower interest rate conditions, but we thought it would be appropriate to use current conditions in our analysis for this study. So, on the right side, the two charts, the chart at the top looks at these six potential issues, ten, fifteen, and twenty-five million at both ten-year and twenty-five years. And what you see reflected there is the annual debt service in millions that is projected based on current market conditions for the issues of those magnitude. On the bottom, it takes that annual debt service and looks at that impact on an average household. As you know, we use an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home as our average household in Lake Forest. And so, what is the dollar impact to an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home of those same six issues? And you can see that they range, on the ten-year side, they're a little higher because of the increased annual debt service because of the shorter maturity. But on the fifteen-year side, the downside of a fifteen-year maturity is it's going to increase overall interest costs. So, that's something we would study with the city councils. We go through the process before we make a final decision on the duration or maturity of the issue. The other footnote I have there, which Alderman Novit beat me to, is the phase-in. So, with Deer Path Park bonds, you see here on this chart the full annual debt service impact on the tax levy. But we would propose, like Deer Path Park, phasing that in over three, three years, so that you don't see that full impact the first year. You begin to phase that in and bring it into the levy over a three-year period rather than the first year. Any questions? And then I just put to the left there, we, we have options that we've explored and discussed briefly with council that we would want to, to discuss in more detail. There would certainly be an option to look at fund reserves as a way to reduce the bond debt service. We do not have reserves to pay the full cost, but we could reduce the bond financing by the use of some level of fund reserves. We also anticipate exploring public-private partnerships over that design period to see where we might have opportunities to reduce costs to the city through a public-private or more partnerships.
And if this is a fifteen, if we do the fifteen-year, and it starts in twenty-four, it'll be, by the time we hit that end point on that first graph that you showed before, I think thirty-three, was the year that all the bonded debt disappeared?
Uh, yeah. So, you see currently, we have all of our existing tax-support, property tax levy-supported debt paid off in levy year thirty-two.
Right.
And so, that might tip out a little bit further and begin to erode some of that out-year capacity if we extend the maturity. So, a lot to explore over the next year in really the detailed financing, but we wanted to give you an idea of kind of where you stood today if you were trying to finance that. So, any questions?
Elizabeth, Director Hollab, could you please just comment on the timing of our school district debt that our citizens or residents are currently paying and how you and the staff have looked at that as well? I think Alderman Novit would really appreciate the time that you all put into that.
Absolutely. So, we understand that we're, we represent twenty-two percent roughly of the total tax bill. So, this impact goes on top of what school districts or the county are doing in their individual levies. And so, as we know, this was the first year that we- that we saw the high school referendum additional debt go on to the tax bill. So that was a significant impact. And they have three years of overlapping their previous referendum debt and their new referendum debt. So that's levy years '23, '24, '25, yes. And so there's three more years. And then their initial referendum, their earlier referendum debt will fall off. That will reduce overall debt to Lake Forest taxpayers by about $3.5 million per year. And so the timing works somewhat nicely as we phase in debt on a police facility. That full extent of that levy would appear on the tax bill likely the same year that the debt service falls off on the high school referendum debt. It shifts the debt, it shifts the levy payment from the high school to the city, but overall, and looking at the overall impact to Lake Forest taxpayers, there's an advantage there.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of final items I would note, and then I promise I will turn it back to the city council for discussion. But as part of the city's due diligence, it wasn't included in tonight's presentation. But the city did also conduct a Phase 1 environmental assessment of the property. That came back clean, positive report. And then I also wanted to share, both with the council and with the public, that recently, the Conway Park Owners Association did vote in support of amendments to their covenants allowing the use of a police facility in the office park. So again, it's worth noting that the Conway Park Owners Association has been enthusiastic in their support of this concept. Final point I will make is that in the interest of transparency with the community, the full purchase-sale agreement and the FGM report were included in the agenda packet for the public. The Concord study, which we summarized here tonight, was not included in the packet only because should the council choose to terminate the purchase-sale agreement tonight, really, in good faith, negotiations with the seller releasing that report publicly would not be appropriate. If the council chooses to take action tonight to proceed with the acquisition, we would make that full report available on the, on the city's dedicated webpage for this project, as we will with all of the other reports. And I will know, because I saw some pictures being taken, the full presentation from this evening will be added to the city's webpage as well. So with that, I will turn it back to council with just a reminder. You can see on your screen the three options that are available for council action tonight is either to facilitate the closing of the property at 1925 Field Court, to terminate the purchase-sale agreement, I'm taking those out of order. And, or third, you may recall that there was language included in the purchase-sale agreement that gave the city the opportunity to extend the due diligence period for an additional 30 days. The council would need to provide direction to staff to do that this evening as a reminder to the council. In order to exercise that additional 30-day window, it requires $100,000 deposit from the city, $50,000 of which is non-refundable. So that is what is before you. Thank you for your patience. And with that, we're either happy collectively to answer any questions you have, or we'll turn it over to the council for discussion amongst yourselves. Thank you. This is from the council.
One question I probably should have asked. Mr. Lang, the space needs assessment that you did for your facility showed a lot of deficiencies. If we were to ask the fire department, similar question regarding their space needs, would they find similar deficiencies with their available space? And if the police department, the second part of the question, if the police department were to vacate the current building, would the vacated space be suitable to help alleviate their space needs if in fact they did?
Yeah, I guess the first one, we share the space, obviously, with them now. And we're both, you know, crammed in there. So I think, if I remember my first question right, it was would there be adequate space for them?
No, the first question is, do they have similar experiences with shortness of space, lack of facilities for the female officers, lack of storage space, so on and so forth, as you cited?
Yeah, I mean, over the last 20 years, as a police officer observing them, I've seen some of those issues. And Chief Seibert can better attest to some of the historical challenges they've had, how they've addressed them. Their challenges are obviously a little bit different, you know, than, than police. So, yeah, I mean, they have had some of those, those challenges as well.
And, and I'm happy to let Chief Seibert speak to that in greater detail. If you want to come up, as he's coming up, I will, I will just note that, and we've discussed this at prior council meetings, I know it's on the city's webpage regarding this project. We do anticipate, just again, to reiterate this point, that the fire department would remain in its current location, unlike our police department, which does not need to respond from a centralized location. They're actively out on patrol. Our fire department does respond from a centralized location. So that location is really critical for them. However, the opportunity to absorb the space vacated by the police department, I think, makes it a viable option, you know, for the next 40, 50 years for the fire department as well. It is important to note that it wouldn't be as simple as just moving in to the space that exists. As has been discussed before, the layout and design of the building is really inefficient. So there would need to be some renovations and remodeling. Over the next year or so, we may not go through the full schematic design process similar to what we're doing for the proposed police facility. But we will look at some preliminary design work to give the council an idea of what the costs may be to allow the space to be renovated to suit the fire department's needs. But Pete, if you want to speak to kind of current space limitations?
Yeah, I think you guys kind of hit the nail on the head. It's, we're seeing a lot of the same challenges. We're getting a lot more female firefighters. And we also have the same problem with our officers having, sharing offices. Just a lot like the police. We've made do with what we have at that building for a long time, since the late '60s. So, yeah, definitely, I think it's a great opportunity that when they can move out and then we can expand and use parts of the building while the other is redeveloped, where we're not like some fire departments are having to live in a trailer for year at a time. So, no, I think all this will be a great opportunity in the future.
Thank you.
Very good. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. So are there other questions, comments from the aldermen? That we'll get to after you discuss it. No? Okay.
You know, I have, I have a couple of quick comments. You know, I think the, the opportunity that is before this council is a chance to make a generational decision for the community. The easy part is the first step, which is acquiring this 98,000-square-foot space that I think is of tremendous value. The challenge becomes, at what point does that value diminish? As you start stacking budgets and build out the facility to be ideal or to be state-of-the-art or to be world-class, whatever Lake Forest, you know, has a tendency to want to do. I also think it's incredibly important that having, many members on the council here have tremendous experience of having done some of these projects before. We've talked about Deer Path Park and we've certainly talked about McKinley Road in the past. How we improve our communication to the community? Because it's so hard, we have an awesome webpage, and I think there's great information on it specific to this project, but it's so hard, I think, for our general public to find a way to navigate to that. So I, I would only ask is if, should we choose to move forward, that we think about how we use what I think is a fantastic communications group with the city to try to explore every avenue we can to, to make sure we're reaching out to the right people in the community? Because what we don't want to do, I think, is overly burden people with added costs from a tax levy standpoint or a bond levy in the current, you know, foreseeable years for the major benefit to be somebody 10 and 15 years from now. It's a constant seesaw thing that I think we all work for. But that would be, you know, obviously, that devil's in the details as we learn more and more about what the real budget number needs to be, what the bond referend, or what the bond offering is going to be. And then very clearly explain that to the community. Because I think we'll go a long way to really help create a glide path for these really tough decisions that are going to come more in the spring and next summer than potentially the one tonight.
I do have just a couple of comments. First, the issue in front of us tonight, and only tonight, is either moving forward or not with the purchase-sale agreement on 1925. And on the surface, you know, given what the construction costs would be, there's a real value there. I see that, and I think most of us, or at least speaking for myself, I see a tremendous value in moving forward with this project. I want to encourage my colleagues up here, though, to recognize that it's been the Lake Forest way, the, been the tradition. We just don't write blank checks. As the city manager indicated, we're going to move down this process. And what we saw as initial project costs of 22 to 26 million or 25 million, that's not written in stone, all right? And we have a long history of really approaching some of these issues sort of in an a la carte manner. Most recently, the Deer Path Community Park, we had some initial project guesstimates that were far and above what we thought they were, and we were able to scale it back. So what Director Hollig was showing us on potential financing, that's just purely informational. You know, in my gut, I'm thinking that these costs are going to be significantly lower. So, but it's incumbent upon us to put up those financial guardrails. We are all just deeply appreciative of law enforcement and the work that they do, as well as for the fire department. But it's really up to us to, to set up some of those guardrails and make sure that those parameters were sticking within. You know, I mentioned Deer Path Park. You know, I can go back just be before that, looking at the bluff stabilization project that we did down at Deer, down at the beach. Some of us were here when we had that initial, initial project, and we looked at the total scope of that project. And we did narrow it down significantly to the more critical areas. I would encourage all of my colleagues up here to, to look at what is critical and what the needs are. And again, to Alderman, Novak's concerns about what the impact is on the tax bill, acknowledging that we have a dire need for an improvement, a need for improvement for our police department and their needs moving forward in the 21st century. But I want to emphasize that, you know, we're the ones who are controlling this project. And this is incumbent upon us to be very careful and mindful of the dollars that are spent, because it will impact future councils. I do think, though, as it's envisioned and with a level of fiscal responsibility, this is going to be an exceptionally, it's going to be a home run. It's really going to be a home run. And doing it the way we have always done it, the Lake Forest way, being very methodical, and I'm really especially glad that the city manager laid out the process moving forward. It may seem like this has come quickly. It seems like we may have been traveling at 70 miles an hour, but it's going to get thrown down into first gear really fast. And the, the involvement of the community, various stakeholders, getting all the input we can get is going to make this a very thoughtful, deliberative process. You know, my biggest concern is making sure that we're supporting law enforcement to its fullest extent. And then closely behind that is making sure that we're doing it in an efficient and responsible, fiscally responsible manner. The item in front of us tonight is adaptive reuse, kind of a no-brainer. I mean, right, why wouldn't we do it? I see tremendous value. But the hard work is actually going to be in the weeks and months to come in terms of making sure we're, we're spending our money wisely and we're looking at all issues in front of us and making sure that the public is made aware of it, too. And sometimes we may get everything we want, and other times we may not. And another classic example is what happened out at Municipal Services Building, 18, 20 years ago, Randy, something like that? I know it was prior to your time on council. But there was a budget, and, and we held to that budget. So, you know, we're, we're going to do the best that we can with what we have, but certainly, it's not a blank check. And I want to assure the public that that is where we're coming from. At least, that's where I'm coming from, making sure that law enforcement gets what they need and doing it in a fiscally responsible manner.
Very good. It's, it isn't the rest of it, and there is a lot of, of work to be done before we get to that. That being said, if, if the project as estimated seems undoable, then there's obviously no point in, in buying a building. But the building is, is the issue this evening. The second thing is, this is, this is a 50-year asset. For those who don't know, I mean, the existing public safety building is 50-plus years old. It was designed for a completely different time. So when you talk about financing this and paying for this and, and the amount of money that we're talking about for the global project allocated over 50 years, assuming, you know, that life, I, I think it looks a little differently than comparing it to, say, the athletic fields, which are a, basically a 10-year lifespan. Now, I don't want to get into that, because there's, you know, things about that we've, we've budgeted for, for replacement of turf and other things. But I don't think they're comparable projects. And, and even, and when you do compare them on their life, this seems like a much more reasonable project, particularly the requirements of public safety and how it's changing and everything else. So I, I do think that, you know, the purchase of the building requires that we have some degree of, of commitment, but not absolute, to sort of following through with the project. But the devil is in the details there, and we'll deal with that. The last thing I want to say about it is, a tremendous amount of time and energy has been put into looking at how this project as a whole, not just the purchase of the building, but the whole project, is going to affect the taxpayers. So, you know, the most common comment I get about it is concern about tax bill, which, coming off of the school referendum and everything else, I completely get that. It, it is our intent to, however this project goes, assuming that it does go forward, that, that we will make every effort to absolutely minimize the impact on the tax bill so that the city is contributing as minimally as possible to progressive increases in property taxes. We are very, very sensitive to that. And Elizabeth and her team has done tremendous modeling, taking into consideration the debt of other tax bodies, which I can tell you, when other tax bodies issue debt, they don't consider what we're doing. But we consider what they've done and how it affects our taxpayers and how we are going to allocate debt over time. So I just want the public to be aware of that. So at this time, it's an opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to come to the podium and speak? Okay, please step up, state your name, address.
Hello, I am Susan Saylor-Daly. I live at 1160 North Sheridan Road here in Lake Forest. I come here representing myself as a private citizen, and all opinions are my own. I see this project as breaking down into several different components. One, need for space, yes.
This Daly?
Yes, can you hear me?
I, I can.
I understand, yes. Well, that's very gracious, thank you. So, do we need space, yes. Second thing, a real estate, a good deal, is it a good deal? It's a lot of building at a very, at a very good cost. That's what the gentleman from the Concord Group said. It is $37 a square foot for the whole building. But if you look at what we need the space for, we're paying $74 a square foot. And if you look at our nice-to-have needs, it's $59 a square foot. So looking at it from that perspective, we are paying a lot for the space that we're going to get. That may be mitigated if we get a lease person. It is costing our city possibly $24 million to retrofit this space. The question is, will this tenant coming in, will they pay- The question is, will this tenant coming in, will they pay for their own costs to fit, to, to fit their space needs? Construction costs will increase, property taxes, maybe not, because office space is not expected to actually recover for 10 years. This would change, a change in assessments on commercial property, would possibly need, the need to raise taxes on the homeowners. And you look at things, you can't tell, and with that crystal ball, in the past, that's been the fail of the bluff at Forest Park Beach. Currently, the owners are, their carrying cost per year is $600,000. That's $393,000 in taxes, and I'm using a $200,000 yearly maintenance expectation. Disappointingly, I have heard no discussion about actual public safety, which is why we're all here, to make sure that everybody is as safe and as well as can be. Public safety is separated into two things. It's separated into prevention and response when something happens. The new location at three miles away would significantly increase school response times. I Google mapped this at 10 o'clock at night on a weeknight, the best I could do without a siren and dispensation from getting a speeding ticket. Sheridan School currently, currently from all school buildings, response times are six to seven minutes. In a, in this new location, three miles away, response times would increase to Sheridan School from a current six minute to 12, from LFHS to 11, from Lake Forest College More Student Center, 11. In fact, all the school response times would increase, except to Everett School, which would remain the same, and Lake Forest Academy, at which it would actually decrease to three minutes, for the obvious reason that it is right beside the proposed police station. You know, that's the worst-case scenario, and you have to, you, you have to plan for that. You know, the eyes of the world were not on Uvalde, Texas until they had this kind of anticipated, not, unanticipated event. As a young woman learning how to drive and then driving by myself, I was always told that if I was uncomfortable driving and I thought somebody was maybe following me, or even if a police officer had put on the siren and wanted to pull me over, that I should drive to a well-lit, busy area or the nearest police station. I live in this community, I know where to find the police station, I don't think anybody outside of the community would. And so, would there be big signs, or would we have this nice, small, neat little sign, green, like this, for the city municipal building that says "Police," this way? I don't know. I think that's a question for us. In the minutes, there was a mention of a heightened sense of security to the office, to, to office tenants, although I would say they're probably thinking they're pretty safe already. And it's a sense of security, it's not a guarantee. But we are transferring that heightened sense of security from our schoolchildren, especially DPM, which is right, ironically, right beside the police station now. We are transferring that sense of security to adults in an office park. And I think that we need to consider that. There's many more comments I would like to share, I've probably forgotten some of them, but that was my synopsis from listening to the comments made tonight and the research that I have done. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure. During, like, you know, any, pick any time of the day, we always have officers that are working in specific parts of the town. The town is divided up into certain zones, as we call them, so we always have a number of officers, as well as, you know, professionally-trained supervisor on duty at all times. People stop process on, you know, the response from the police department while our officers are out on the street. During some business hours, we may have people like myself, or Deputy Chief Zelk, or our investigations group at the police department, and they, you know, may respond in larger situations as well. So, yeah, there are a few people that could be responding from the police station, but the majority of our officers are going to be out in town, just as they normally have. We're not changing any of our patrol sectors in any way, or changing any of that responsibility. And, yeah, so we, we don't anticipate there to be any delay in responding to anybody's call for service in any way, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Is there anybody else in the public?
I'd like to ask Kim one more question, sir. How many patrols are out at any given time?
Yeah, excuse me. Could you come up to the podium and state your name and address, and, and this generally isn't a question-and-answer session, but it's fine.
I'm, I'm new to coming here, but thank you very much for having me. I'm John Turkly, I live at 582 Meadowwood, Ward 3. Officer, how many, or Chief, I'm sorry. How many patrols are out at any given time? Because that is one of my concerns, and I have another question.
Yeah, so our town is divided up into four main sectors, and we, so we always have one sergeant or commander on, sergeant or commander on duty, and we have four officers at a minimum, so that would be called our shift minimums. Obviously, there are days when we have more that are out on patrol. There are days when we have specialized or directed patrols, as we call them, going on for, for specific reasons around town, but at a minimum, there's five, and, and on occasion, there's more, so.
Sure, please, yes.
Ms. Daly brought up, you know, the average response time. It's 4.7 miles from the new location to Sheridan School, it's 4.4 miles or 4.5 miles to the new location to the, the high school, the, the largest of the population. But we also have traffic considerations, specifically during the week, in the morning at like, from nine o'clock and in the afternoon, where those, those numbers can significantly increase. And sort of the thought of having a central police station like we've had up to this point, kind of gives you that security that we're sort of two miles from everything, right? And here, by being on the farthest outskirts of the town, we're 4.5, 4.7 miles from two of our, our public schools, and God forbid something did happen during those traffic times, we'd only have maybe one or two patrols on that side that could possibly get there at that time. What would be the contingency for that by moving our police facilities out west? And, and first off, I also want to say, I certainly understand and agree with the fact that we need better facilities for our police department and, and encourage that.
I'll just say that, you know, we are in a constant state of evaluating how well we're serving the community. We're always looking at not just crime patterns, but, you know, other community needs in which we can help. So, you know, as we go forward, as Deputy Chief Zelk and I have had a lot of conversations, you know, I think that it's important for us to continue that evaluation of how are we providing those services? And if we see there's maybe potentially in the future a better way to allocate resources that we have in order to, you know, improve response times, or if we're seeing any issues, that's clearly incumbent upon us to, to address that right away and fix that. So that will be a, a constant kind of examination of how we're providing our services to the community, and if there are any issues that do come up, and then how do we then reallocate resources? We don't anticipate that happening, but I think it's prudent for us to have that mindset, to always be aware. And you're right about the traffic. The, the traffic at the time, the construction patterns at the time have a significant, you know, impact, you know, on our response time is, you know, I think that's fairly reasonable, so. Hope that helps, answer?
May, may I speak?
Thank you very much.
May I add to that, and Chief Lang, I may call on you just to support me, but in addition, because schools are really an important part of this puzzle, so to speak, and our children, my understanding is, is there's a SRO at each, at the high school and at the middle school, and I know District 67 has added a chief security officer that reports to the superintendent. So there is another layer that we have added to make sure that we're not just relying on the police to get there in time, we have people that are, are closer to, to add to that level of coverage. Could, could you confirm that?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Yeah, we, and we do have a full-time SRO, so whenever we have our school in session, there is always a police officer in the school. There are times when our school resource officers are gone on different specialized training assignments, and then we backfill that with other officers, you know, who, so we make sure we always have that presence. So at least in Deer Path Middle School, when it's in session, or at some of the major events, there's always a police officer there. Lake Forest High School, same thing, during school time or major events at night, always a police officer there. So that response time clearly wouldn't be changed, you know, in any way, so. And then our Deer Path Middle School Resource Officer also tries to reach out to Cherokee and Sheridan and Everett and provide some of the services there, you know, when she can, as well as our high school resource officer works with Lake Forest College, I mean, and Lake Forest Academy as well. So we do have that kind of on-scene, full-time law enforcement presence during operating hours for our schools as well. If that helps?
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thoughts? Yes?
Grace to you and peace. My name is Tom Krantz, I live at 1322 Edgewood Road, I've been a resident here for about 18 years. Henry Ford once said that any customer can have any color as long as it's black, and judging from the vibe, I have a feeling that this is going to get passed through regardless of what any of us say. My question is, the building is a great deal, it'd be a great investment for the community to either lease out or to sell down the road and, and make money to pay for some of the, some of the debt. My question, though, is, is crime foreseeable, more crime in the future here in Lake Forest? Are we going to have a substantial amount of crime coming here that we need to add more police and more facilities and more stuff, more technology to the city? And second of all, how come we're not looking at using technology instead of building more on the police force, but using more technology to patrol and, and, and take care of the city? Drones, we could implement, with this kind of money, we could implement ring doorbell cameras on every single house in Lake Forest, we could put cameras on every single public vehicle, we could do many things besides do the same as we've always done, and I really think that we really need to look at what we're doing here as far as, we're going to take the taxpayers. Now, the, the school barely passed, 50%, it's barely passed, so the residents of this community are really not for increasing taxes, and I really think that you should really take a look at, do we really need this? Can we do other ways to patrol and take care of our residents besides building a bigger building, more police, and more police cars? And one of the things I read is like, oh, it's going to be closer to the public thing because we're going to, we need to fuel the vehicles. Well, are we not going to go electric or natural gas vehicles? Why are we, I mean, that shouldn't be even the decision on, on why we're moving to that location. But again, I think we really need to analyze, I mean, I, I would prefer that the taxes go down, not go up, but I also prefer that we take a look and say, are we foreseeably see that we're going to militarize our police and we're going to have all this crime in Lake Forest? And I think this should be evaluated before you make a decision. If you want to get the building, get the building, but I don't agree that it should be allocated for the police at this moment. Get the building, and it's a good investment, sell it next year or two years and make a couple million or whatever it is, and use that money to pay off debt, or if you decide that policing at that time in a couple of years or so is good, then, then move forward. But I really think, I mean, how many residents here, how many do we have? We have 30,000 or so residents here in Lake Forest, how many are here to even say anything about this? None. I think we need to have an app that the people can vote right on the app, that, you know, people got, you know, they've got families and there's soccer practice, and they don't have three hours to come to a city council meeting to even discuss their feelings on this. It should be something that is more accessible, that one gentleman there was saying about being more transparent, having a better website and so forth. But I also think, you know, you could do an app and you could have, I had a, I had a party and I had community officers come in and ticketed like four or five of the cars that were parked on the wrong side of the road. It'd be nice to have an app that was tied into your, to your GPS that says, oh, this is an ordinance, you can't park on this side of the road, and they say, oh, okay, and then I just go park somewhere else. And I think we need to use technology to do a lot of things in our community as opposed to keep adding more material and more physical people. That's all I have to say.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, are there any further comments from the council? Alderman Weber?
First and foremost, I think staff has done a phenomenal job laying out the extensive and longstanding needs of our police department and fire department, for that matter. Certainly recognize that any advantage that technology can bring you today, I am highly confident that our police department and city staff are taking that into consideration and maximizing the potential that that offers every single day. When you look at the litany of just the basic needs that our department has, those extend well beyond what technology can support, whether it's the, the command staff sharing office space and being on top of each other to evidence storage, to training facilities and multi, I was going to, male and female restrooms, locker rooms, facilities like that, there, there's a physical plant that has to be accommodated, and I think the staff and our consultants have done a phenomenal job outlining the deficiencies that our current facilities have and that a new facility affords. I think the decision to invest the three and a half million dollars by pursuing the purchase and sale agreement at this point in time makes sense. As it's been indicated, this is just the first step of a multi-step process that's going to reach out to the community at large so that, to the extent anyone feels that this is new information, and, and again, it really has not, the city's done an extensive job of making the effort of getting this message out to the community, but there'll be certainly many, many more opportunities over the next 12 months for citizen engagement. I have absolutely no reservation that the decision to move forward with the purchase and sale agreement today makes sense.
Like my fellow aldermen, I too agree that buying the building is a good idea. We have a land use issue, we're, there really is nowhere else to put a new police department, at least in this moment. The opportunity to use this space and repurpose it is environmentally sound, it's, it's economically sound, and it's a way to meet the needs that have grown since that first police department was built in the early, in the late 60s. It also gives the fire department space to expand and utilize what they need. So we're really helping two public safety functions at the same time in the city that are needed. The other thing is that the fire department's not moving, so if somebody is driving and a little scared, they can pull into the fire department if they need a, a safe haven. It's not like there isn't somewhere else to go, and I'm, I'm confident that that's the right thing to do, it's the right decision to make right now, is to buy this building and then progress from there, whether or not it's a long-term solution. And if it isn't, we don't do it, but if it is, we've set the stage to go forward in a responsible, responsible way for the community.
Any other thoughts? Alderman Weber?
Thank you, Mayor Tac. Without reiterating much of my fellow alderman's comments, the biggest challenge is where else do you go? And in the months of discussion that this council has had with staff, they've looked at other locations. Where can we go? And there isn't an identifiable place at this time, and so this opportunity stands before us, and I also agree that this is the next step in this process. We've had several press releases over the last few weeks from our fire department, police department, which is indicative of the amount of investigative work that our officers are doing. And when we talk about space needs, we're talking about these officers able to do their top-notch investigative work to solve these crimes, to catch these criminals, despite the fact that upon warnings and warnings, the crime still comes. People are still leaving their doors unlocked with the fob in the car. People are still leaving their doors unlocked with the fob in the car. How, how many times do we have to say, you know, crime follows where the opportunity lies? And our department is working so hard all of the time to stop that activity. So I am excited about the opportunity, I'm excited about the flock cameras that have been installed, that have helped, that we talk about technology to help our investigative work. And I see this, again, as an opportunity for us to take that next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Okay. So at this point, I think it's appropriate to move forward. So there are three, as mentioned, there are three options, and I'm going to read all of them, so, for the public record, okay? And I'll label them one, two, and three. So the options in front of the council are, option one, by motion, direct the city manager to take all necessary steps to facilitate closing on the purchase of the 1925 Field Court and authorize the expenditure of non-budgeted funds in the amount not to exceed $3,500,000 plus associated closing in accordance with the previously approved purchase and sale agreement. The second option is, by motion, direct the city manager to exercise the city's option to extend the due diligence period for an additional 30 days upon payment of an additional earnest money deposit of $100,000, $50,000 of which is non-refundable. Or the third option in front of you is, by motion, direct the city manager to terminate the purchase and sale agreement in accordance with the provisions therein. The city will receive a full refund of the initial earnest money deposit of $100,000. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve option one. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So at this time, we'll take a roll call vote on option one.
Alderman Clemmons.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Gasharian.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business, of which there is none this evening. At this time, are there any other items for discussion or additional comments by council Hearing, none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.